Mayor calls a meeting of Thursday, February eleventh. City council meeting to order. Like a motion approved the agenda. Need a second?
Second.
First and second, all in favor? Aye, aye, aye. Ayes have it. Tony Piersland County Sheriff, sir, you're up.
Thank you, sir. Covers period of January fourteenth through February, or yeah, February eleventh. Eighty-six point nine hours logged of the forty-three contracted. Twenty-three log cost for service. Questions? Problems? Concerns? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff, fire department report, Steve, you're up.
We had twelve calls for service in January. We had three mutual inciters. One Marion, two essential city. We had five medical in the town. Two fires in the township. CO2 alarm in town and a medical standby at the school. Crazy much of a fire.
It's the most fire too.
Having here, right there.
You guys aren't gonna pay this much.
I got a quote for bunker gear. He just got it to me tonight, but... Price will probably go up just a little because he forgot to put suspenders in there for the gear. But I need at least, I think, three full sets of bunker gear. And like three or four pants and some boots. Boots are like three or bucks a piece and some gloves are thirty bucks a piece.
Twenty is for one set?
That's one set of gear. And it's broken down per coat per pant. He thought tops sixty, seventy bucks for pairs of suspenders.
So we'd have to add sixty bucks to this?
Yeah. He was gonna email me once he... And I told him I know if I'll be able to get approved tonight, but at least in the next month. Give you an idea.
You need how many what?
Like three full sets. And like four pants.
So we need...
So it'd be three times this, right?
Yes.
Just at least, okay?
Yeah, who are you gonna need?
All right.
So you're gonna need... You want three coats and seven pants?
Yeah.
What'd you say boots were?
Right, is that correct?
Yeah. Like right around three or one of them both.
And what'd you say on boots?
At least two pairs of boots. It might just be one because I can get size seventeen boots, but...
And boots, how much you use that?
There were three oh one in their catalog. And then gloves were like twenty-eight something, the gloves, so they're probably four, five sets gloves.
Don't we keep, don't you keep an extra supply? Is that why you're...
Yes.
Questions?
When's the last time that you've ordered a big order like this?
This is relatively small, but... The last time we replaced all of our gear was like two thousand and two. Since then, like two thousand and ten, we bought just one set per guy. But we have one that she's been using someone else's gear if she's not there and...
Yeah.
Personal duties. She's been on for a while.
Ten thousand eight forty-eight, which is...
Yeah.
Yeah, Steve, why don't you do the next meeting, why don't you have a higher mics list and I'll tell them what it is?
That's what I planned on, I planned to give you guys a heads up. I didn't want you to go...
Well, you should have this week.
Well, I know. So next week, it won't be a total surprise. Yeah. And I planned on doing that, but I just wanted to give you a heads up.
Is there anything else? If you're gonna be putting an order in, is there any other type of equipment? I mean, if we're gonna do this?
I'm looking at, well, the CO monitor. Ours crapped out and it's gonna cost three, four dollars to fix it. It was seven hundred and something when we bought it, but I can get a smaller version for just about two hundred bucks. And the battery alone is two thirty something.
I don't know what the council thinks. I think they'll come up with what you think. I mean, that's something that we need to make sure that we have our safety and all our stuff in order in case, God forbid, we would have a, an incident and then all of a sudden we, well, you should have had this or you should have had that. We don't need that. I don't know what the rest of the council thinks, but come up with any other equipment, so make sure we're safe.
And the lights, we're supposedly shipped Tuesday. We got delayed. Hopefully next week they'll fit them in the truck.
Anything else? Thanks, Steve. Matt, you're up.
Talking with Art now, or?
Yeah. Well, actually, I guess, no, we got it, that's on as its own agenda item, just a little bit later.
Yeah.
So if you have anything else other than moot heart.
Okay. I don't have any else besides that, but if...
Isn't it on the agenda item?
It is, it's on its own agenda item.
Oh.
So I'm saying, if you wanna get through the rest of your fellow appearances...
Good call.
Yeah. I can have anything.
You wanna wait then?
Yeah.
Joe, you're up.
All right. I'll be quick, that sounds interesting, so let's get to that. But normally when I come and talk with you, I do an overview of all the agency services and programs available to all the citizens of Albernett. But tonight, I'm gonna focus on just one issue in particular, and that is recyclables processing. So I'll give you a brief history on that. Curbside collection of recycling's been in Lynn County since nineteen ninety-nine. And since then, the salvage agency has always paid for that. We don't do any of the collection, I know most of you guys use Rudd, there's one waste management customer. But whenever it gets picked up curbside, has been taken down to the City Cart recycling facility over by Hawkeye Downs. And that's what do the actual processing, separating the paper, plastic, cardboard and tin. And we've always paid for that. It's not, it's not free, and people say recycling's free, now there's a cost to it, we've always picked it up. We've paid thirty-four fifty per ton to do the processing. But we had a profit sharing agreement with City Cart, and so when they would sell and market off the paper and the plastic, you know, that would bring down our total. So historically, since nineteen ninety-nine through fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, we ended up paying about twenty-two fifty per ton. Two things happened last year. One, City Carton was sold to Republic Services. Republic's the second biggest garbage company in the United States, you know, where's waste management, then there's Republic. The second thing was, our contract with City Carton was up. So we went out for bid for recycling services again for processing. Republic was the only company that re, that came back to us and said, we still wanna process your recyclables, but we're gonna increase your rate, uh, your fee eighty-eight percent. So they're gonna go from thirty-four fifty per ton to sixty-five per ton. So we were looking at that, how we would, if we continue to pay for it, as we always had in the past, we're gonna have to raise our garbage tipping fee by more than four dollars. Because right now, we charge thirty-eight per ton, we'd have to go up to forty-two fifty to pay for it. We don't wanna do that. If we raise, we get a lot more garbage than we do recycling. Last year, we landfill one hundred and seventy-two thousand tons of garbage. We only paid for the processing of about fifteen thousand tons of recyclables. So the best that we can work out with is, we're gonna continue to pay thirty-four fifty per ton towards the processing. And we're asking all of our member, associated member of communities to pick up the other thirty fifty per ton. That way, it's still cheaper than it would be just to throw everything in the garbage and landfill it. Uh, and this way, hopefully that we can wait out the market. Because the reason why the price they wanna go so high with that is, recycling market's terrible right now. It's not just in Iowa, it's not nationwide, it's worldwide. It's cheaper right now because of oil prices to make everything out of virgin plastic than it is to make it out of recycled material. The market for paper's almost non-existent, and that's even with international paper in town getting all the cardboard. And then even scrap metal prices, the scrap metal has always been pretty high. It's like a six of what it was a year ago. So recycling's just kinda bad all over right now. That's the reason we think Republic was the only company that responded to our RFP. We haven't signed a contract yet with Republic, we're still negotiating with them. What this fee would work out to for City of Albernett, it's a dollar seventy-nine per person for the whole year. So for the city, for the entire year, it would be one thousand two hundred and five dollars and one cent. And so, for example, like I'm a family of five, my family of five would be eight dollars and ninety-five cents for the whole year to continue to recycle curbside. And for the folks that use our facility down county home road here, they're coming to drop off, there'll be no charge for that. People, if they bring things in, it's still gonna be no charge. Reason I'm here tonight, though, is informational. You guys could, you need this information, you can see the figure here. If you guys are working on your budget, you could say, all right, yeah, we wanna do this, we continue on to be able to recycle curbside. Or you could say, you know what, we're gonna talk to Rudd or Waste Management, whoever we work with and see, can they work out a better deal? And can they have something going on with either Republic, if they can find another outlet, can they do it cheaper? Or you can just say, you know what, forget it, we're gonna throw everything in the garbage, we don't care if it costs more, we just don't wanna, we don't wanna deal with it. So those are the options, so that's why I just kinda wanna come here and talk to you about that. But we're gonna, I wanna check back in, I'll call Sharon next month and ask her, you know, what's the city thinking? Because when we went into negotiations with Republic, we wanna be able to say, hey, we have Cedar Rapids on board, we have Marion on board, we have Albernett and Paylow. They've all indicated that they're gonna continue to work with us, they're gonna pick up this fee, let's bring this down to, you know, fifty dollars, fifty-five dollars, whatever we can get. But we had to put this together for our budget, it was due in December, so that's why we came up with this. So this dollar seventy-nine per person for the year, that's worst case scenario. Well, we wanted to come back and ask you for more. And if we do sign a contract with Republic, it's only gonna be for one year, two years tops, because a war could break out in the Middle East a year from now. Oil prices skyrocket again, all of a sudden, there's gonna be demand for that recycled material. We don't, we're only gonna ask communities to pay when it goes above that thirty-four fifty per ton, when we can't afford to do it, so... And the other thing is, we just don't want people to get out of the habit, I mean, everyone's been recycling now for, for years. We'd hate to see people stop doing it, and then three years from now, the recycling market's rebound and everyone's ended up having to just throw everything away. And all of a sudden, landfill's filling up with material that couldn't be reused. So this is the best of a, this, we're trying to make the best of a bad situation right now.
Any questions?
I have a question. You said that you take in recycling for free?
If people, if people bring it to us, if they come in and drop it off directly there, we won't have a charge for that, you know. We have our, our wall that they throw it over on the floor there. We're gonna continue to pick that up. And then we pay for the processing of that material that comes in, and it still gets sent over to the former City Carton facility.
But Rudd, you charge them twenty dollar tipping fee or something?
We don't, we do not charge it.
Twenty a ton?
No. Rudd, Rudd comes in and drops it off, and then we haul it over there, and we just pay for the processing. So your contract, this doesn't have anything to do with your individual contracts that you have with Rudd, your hauler. This has nothing to do with that. This is just for the processing of that material that's been picked up. We don't charge Rudd any, never have.
If I'm understanding this, this is to help you guys offset the higher cost of the rec, getting your stuff recycled at, from the landfill. I mean, the stuff that you have, that you ship over there to the recycling center, this is to offset the higher cost from the new company, is that correct?
Yeah, this is the, yeah, the higher cost for all, and even the material that doesn't get brought to us. Yeah, so like Cedar Rapids, they don't bring their material to us, they haul directly there. We still, we pay for that. So if it gets collected curbside in Lynn County, that's what we pay for.
Have you checked with any other counties or cities to see what their cost is and how they're doing it?
Yeah. Waste Commission of Scott County, who does the Quad Cities, they're paying eighty-three dollars per ton for processing. The Buick is at a hundred and three per ton for processing. And Metro Waste Authority, who does Polk County, Des Moines, they've always made money off of recycling until this year. Their processor came to them and said, I can't live up to the terms of this contract anymore, if you don't change this, we're going to court. So they actually changed it, and now they're paying for processing for the first time ever. It's bad, it's bad all over.
Sure. Okay, you said you don't charge Rudd anything, right?
For the recycling that they bring in, we charge them for...
So if we set it out at the curb and they pick it up per person...
They're charging you for the collection, they're charging you for the collection service.
Each individual person that has it, yeah.
No, we don't have a contract with Rudd.
No, we don't have a contract, each person.
Each person does, yeah.
So we don't do any billing of any garbage of any sort, so...
And so that's the thing, like...
So if we set it out and you don't charge them, I mean, why are we in the middle of this?
Because it's coming from the, the community of Albernett. Now, if you were to come back and say, and this is the thing, Albernett, Walker, Bertram and Hiawatha, you guys are, choose your own communities. You don't have the contract with the individual hauler. So this is a different situation for you for them. Like last night, I was in Central City, they have a contract with Rudd, and they told me, we're gonna pick up the fee for the year for the residents. And they'll pass it along through the individual bill, like I said, and Paylow indicated they were gonna do the same thing too, and they also work with Rudd. With you, how would it be, this would be a service you're providing for your, your community, because I think everyone's obligated in Albernett to have their own garbage hauler, correct? So I don't know how you would go about it, do you just have, with your taxes, if it'd be a general fund, or how that would, how that would work out? What we would do, if we would send the city of Albernett, we would send you a bill, it'd either be once a year if you wanted, or we could do it quarterly. You'd just, you'd let us know how that would be. And that would be up to the city, how you would wanna go about getting that back from your residents. But I, it's a different situation for, for those four.
Well, I wouldn't mind that, but you took our credits away, so when we do cleanup day, that's gonna be a cost to the city now too, out of them.
The reason we dropped the community credits is, my, this is my sixth year with the agency. My first year we were there, we landfill one hundred and ninety-five thousand tons of garbage. Last year, we were down to one hundred and seventy-two thousand tons. On the one hand, that's good, that means people are recycling, that material's being kept out of the ground. On the other hand, we don't receive any, any tax dollars, everything, all of our services programs are funded by the garbage we get. So when we get less garbage, we get lesser revenue. So we've had to cut community credits, we had a business grant program that encouraged recycling development, that's been cut. And then we got hit with this eighty-eight percent increase.
You guys, if I'm understanding this right, you're wanting less garbage to come in. And so that's your goal, and you're cut, it's kinda like...
We're cutting our own throat.
You're cutting your own throats, yeah, that's what I'm getting at, is, is you're succeeding in what you're doing, but yet then you're having to cut everything, so... So mainly, the, your point is, this is to help offset the whole county's increased that you are, you're going to incur sending the recyclables.
Yes. And we did it this way, so it would still be cheaper to recycle than it would be just to throw everything away.
If I read this right, you took the difference from your thirty-four fifty, right, you took that number?
Correct.
Then it added up to this larger number at the bottom, right?
Yes.
And then you took that between all the communities that are involved here?
We did it based on the two thousand and ten census, yeah.
Okay. And then you broke it up between those communities based on population or usage or some factor like that?
The population.
Right, okay, so then that's what these individual numbers represent of each one, right?
Yeah.
And then you took that number and said, what's that equal per community, which, where you get that dollar seventy-nine, right?
Right.
What happens if Cedar Rapids says, we're not gonna participate, and you lose two hundred and twenty-six thousand in revenue? Who makes up that difference?
Cedar Rapids, they told us they are...
I know, but obviously, people keep saying, I'm not gonna participate, how can you keep that at one seventy-nine? That difference has to be made up. So where's that money come from if people don't participate?
If we're not able, that would, if we can't work out the contract and get the fee with Republic, then we wouldn't be able to offer it.
Okay. Because I mean, this number is assuming everyone on this list participates, right?
We're thinking that, like Hiawatha has, hasn't, they're indicating maybe they're not going to. So, but Albernett, it'll only be a dollar seventy-nine. We, we would just go, we will go to Republic and say, we're representing these seventeen communities, this community, Hiawatha is choosing, choosing us to participate. But so we, it would never go a dollar, above that dollar seventy-nine figure for the city of Albernett. But we, we're hoping everyone gives us, stays with us, because that gives us leverage when we go into bargaining with them, saying, hey, we're representing all these...
Who makes up that difference, you guys?
We'll just tell them...
They can't bring their stuff.
Yeah.
And so what happens if you don't participate?
What'll happen is, like, you guys come to us and you're like, you know what, we're out. So what we'll do is, what's up, Republic, if you get a, a Rudd truck coming in, or a, a Waste Management truck coming in, and it has material from Albernett, we're not paying for it. Then that hauler would be responsible for it. So that's why, then the hauler might come back to the community and say, we're no longer picking up recycling. Because then it's on them.
Why are you not dealing with the haulers?
Yeah.
Yeah. They're not, they're not, they're not the generator. You're the generator.
So most communities, most communities have contracts with, or have their own, like Robbins.
Cedar Rapids, Cedar Rapids, Marion.
Have one guy, one contract with one thing. Very few towns, you can just hire your own individual.
Right. Cedar Rapids and Marion are the only two communities that have their own city trucks.
Right.
Everybody else, most northern up here is, is Rudd has most of the contracts up here. Then Johnson County Refuge has a couple, they have Fairfax and Lisbon, I think. Wopsy Waste has Mount Vernon, but yeah, they all have a exclusive contract with that person, just Walker, Albernett, Bertram and Hiawatha are the four, it's choose your own.
So Rudd might keep taking it for us for free, and even if they didn't, we could maybe offer them a little less, and they're gonna take it over there. Cut you out and give it to them, they take it over there, you're still gonna process it.
No, if we will...
If they dump it there, what are you gonna do with it?
If, we won't accept it from them. If it comes, if it tells them, we'll tell them, if it's coming from, you've collected this from Albernett, it can't come to us, you'll have to take it directly to Republic.
We'll pay them to say it came from Cedar Rapids.
I know where you're going, but question then. So you're saying if we would not participate this, and Rudd would pick up our recyclables here in town and brought them to your landfill, you would not accept them, or you would accept them?
We would, we would take the garbage, because your garbage is...
Right, but you would not accept the recyclables.
We would not take the recycling.
So that's where you have your leverage on the hauler's end.
If Marcha pays you the twelve seventy-nine, or whatever, the dollar seventy-nine per person, I mean, she's gonna tack it on your garbage bill anyway. So can she pay it to you instead of the city?
I don't think they want to. And not, the way, way, way that we're set up to do this is to go, is through the cities, it has nothing to do with the haulers.
But see, the hauler has nothing to do with us, I mean, it's each individual person.
That's where it comes down to, do you wanna, do you wanna pick this up on behalf of the community? Because for, for your residents, who are gonna get the service? I mean, it, it's, it's a unique situation for you guys, I, I admit.
I think this is something we're just gonna have to discuss. We don't have an easy way of collecting it. We're not gonna find any answers here by what's going on right now. Is this something we'll have to sit down and look at?
And if you, if, you know, yeah, email me, I'll go through, I'll go through our executive director and our accountant too.
So then Marcha just won't pick up recyclables and will just throw everything in the trash?
Right.
Any other questions here?
Three and a half cents a week.
Yeah. Do you, do you guys need this decision by...
Hopefully, I think our next round of negotiations limit's coming up in March. We hope, we wanna have something hopefully figured out by April at the latest, but I'll just, I'll call back in March and check in with Sharon and take what, see where you guys are thinking, just so we kinda know that we can say, hey, you have these folks on board, or they're gonna go to do something else.
Hey, is this a multi-year contract, or what?
It'll be one year, two years tops, again, because we don't wanna...
So it could go up, or it could go down then?
It'll reach a point, if it reaches a point where it doesn't make sense financially to recycle, we're not gonna do it. I mean, if it, if it, we're getting like a five-year slump here where everything is down, and all of a sudden they come back like, you know what, we wanna charge a hundred dollars for processing. Well, we're charging thirty-eight dollars per ton of landfill, that doesn't make any sense, you know?
So what happens when the graph goes back up and recycling's now worth gold again?
When, if it is worth gold again?
Yeah, what happens then? Where, where, where does our money, um...
Then, if we're not having to charge you that, and you guys are still billing your residents, how would you put it in the fund and hold it for if it goes down again? Because we're only gonna ask the communities to pay when it goes above that thirty-four fifty. Now, if we sign a year contract at that rate, and then recycling, you know, rebounds, we're screwed for the rest of the year. But that's why we're gonna keep it, you know, for a one to two-year contract max.
Any other questions? Anybody have any other comments?
I turn out.
Thank you.
Thanks. Susan, before you present, can I tell you what I found out?
Absolutely.
Because it might change what you wanna say. I think most, well, some of you know Susan's situation, she has two water meters in her basement for her house, and the one that's behind it, it's from a long time ago. She brought it up to me when I did her swamp pump inspection. Since then, I've talked with Dan Sherman, who owns the other house that the water line is going to. And I haven't been able to make contact with the construction company, but he is more than willing to put in another service. You weren't quite frank with me, and didn't tell me that you wouldn't allow him to put a water line through your property, and you were gonna make him bore, which makes the project cost five times. Wow, that's exactly what he told me.
I actually have two estimates.
He told me that the only way you would allow it is to, for you to bore, for him to bore the line in under drive.
And he has never spoken to me about it. Everything I have is from his attorney.
Okay.
So that has never been a conversation.
Let's, let's leave that out, but that's why he hasn't, he hasn't done anything. He would be happy, that's what he's telling me, just like you've told me your side of it. So basically, what needs to be done, it really should be done, is that the water line, you know, needs to be coming from its own tap on the main, so that that house has its own water meter in its basement, he is in total agreement with that. Now, there was some limitation of, of access, there had to have been, otherwise there wouldn't be this issue. You, you refused at some time to let them go where they wanted to go, I assume.
No, that's not the case.
Well, then, one of you's not telling the truth, but anyway.
Yeah.
We've got a, a unique situation right now, the school project going on, I've talked with Dan, he's more than willing to put the line in. The water main between the school and these two houses is gonna be exposed probably sometime this summer. The asphalt will be torn up, because the last stage of the building project will be done, and he's more than willing to put a water line in. So all I need to do is finish grabbing all the details from the construction company, when they're gonna have it opened up, if that would be a hindrance to them, that would cost the school money to have him tap...
Right.
While they're in the middle of their construction. I don't wanna put you off, but what I'm saying is, I think we have a solution in this thing right in front of us. And so let me finish researching it, I guess.
Absolutely, and I have, I have paperwork from my attorney where I even offered to pay a portion of it.
Okay.
So for him to come back and say that I'm not trying to get it out, I mean...
That's hopefully just...
I have, yeah, I have been working on this for years, and I have an estimate that goes through my yard and an estimate that goes around my yard that he was presenting with. So I have, I, I mean, I just, wow, I have zero responses from him...
Yeah.
Over and over and over again.
It's, I totally understand your frustration, but I think we have a solution in front of us.
Absolutely.
And I think we can get there, and I think I made it clear to him that it has to be resolved somehow, some way. He expressed his concerns, which don't match up with what you said, but yet, both of you know what the final solution has to be, so I think we're there. I think we just, I don't see any issue, I think we're gonna get it done, I really do.
Then I, then I don't have a problem, I mean, I just...
Yeah.
It's not gonna come out of my basement.
No, it does, it does. And, and even if, we did a little research on the ordinance, and that ordinance, that water, second water meter was in your basement before our ordinance actually read what you sent me. And so if you wanted to, to go by the way things are grandfathered, you, you don't have a leg to stand on as far as the ordinance goes. But everybody in this instance, including the city, I think, would want that water meter out of your basement, so...
Right.
And you do, we know that, and Dan does.
I would know so.
He, he just doesn't wanna spend a fortune to get it out, you know, but I think we're there. So I wish I had talked to the construction company, I would've called you and said, maybe you don't even have to come, but I don't have that piece of the puzzle yet, but it's coming. The, the right guy hasn't been in town for a week, so...
And I'd be happy to send you the estimates I got, in case that's not an option.
Sure.
Because I think the highest estimate was like twenty-three hundred dollars, and I had offered to pay part of that, so...
No problem, I think we...
And it's not like it was something that was going to be so very...
Absolutely, absolutely. I, I, I just, from my conversation with Dan, which no one here knew about, and you didn't know about, I'm, I'm confident we can get this done somehow, because...
Good, okay.
I think that from now, with Guy being this, this would be a thing for you, Guy, Dan, and you, and the construction up there to handle.
And it would save you guys a lot of time and the council, and would just, he'll keep us informed, as the rest of council members think.
I want it that way too, because if there's a leak in the middle of, you know, and I'm, I'm the one chasing it, I don't wanna have to come find two households just to get one house...
Right, well, and you know, and you saw my basement, I run my business out of my basement, and so any kind of damage in there is going to affect everything. And I wouldn't want it to be, then it's gonna be even more than that.
I wish it could be done tomorrow, we, we won't be that speedy, but we'll get it done.
I've waited three years, I can wait another year.
Not a problem, not a problem.
Matt, you're up.
Now we're on moot heart. Thanks, Susan.
I, um, I don't know if you guys have copies of everything or...
The one that you want me to? I made it a little bigger than the one you sent.
Okay. I, I did put together a contract.
Okay, I can get copies of these.
Well, I guess I, I don't know, do you have business rolling or...
No, I think she's making...
I guess first we can talk about that, I did put the estimates together. The original, I had enough engineers estimate, construction estimate for a twenty, twenty-eight foot wide street. Right existing is twenty-four. Everything has been based on twenty-eight so far, but I did do a twenty-six and a twenty-four. Essentially going from a twenty-eight foot wide to a twenty-six, you're dropping approximately two hundred, twenty thousand dollars construction cost. You go in there, then you put in a twenty-four, it's another twenty thousand approximately. So depending on what width you want on the road, it may decrease some, logic like twenty thousand, another twenty thousand. I think that's, you got that after a lot of last twenty-five, yeah, so... It is possible that we could do a twenty-eight through there.
It is possible? All this is gonna do is shrink between the sidewalk and the street, right? The sidewalk's gonna stay where it's at?
Uh, yeah, it's, well, assuming it, I, I'll, we'll know more once we survey and everything, but, you know, the sidewalk to the north is right on the property line. There's a little more room to the south, but, um, there's enough room and it's gonna fifty-foot wide right away to fit a twenty, twenty-eight.
Here's the map right here in the wall. This is all Mootards probably.
So, February did that road.
Your sidewalk is right on that property line, like, two or three, eighty-two trees?
Yeah, there was, yeah.
How far is the curb gonna be from the sidewalk? If you do twenty-eight foot?
Um, I don't know exactly.
You're only two foot per side wider, you know, this much wider per side of the street when you think center lines.
Doesn't say never slow them down.
The right snow, I can, I can throw it all the way to the front doorstep if I have that, you know?
Yeah, we would have to look at it and then try to see how it ties into Nailers there, but, um, right now the street's not like the center of the rideaway. So you could, you could add, maybe put three feet on one side and one to the north.
If you, if we redo that road and you're saying the sidewalk's right on the property line? On the north side?
North side's pretty close.
If we re-engineered all that, would we have to move that, or can you leave it right on the property, or does it have to be like a foot off?
That's a, I mean, you need a fifty-foot right away.
Yeah, fifty foot, right, the sidewalk is close, I mean, I'm just going off of what the Lynn County's G I F, I don't know exactly. You know, in the process of, um, designing a lot to get, you know, property corners and go to the courthouse and get, um, documentation where the actual right-of-way is, to know exactly where is that, but, right now, it's pretty close, right?
Yeah, it's, the line is right on, in, in fact.
The sidewalk's within the right-of-way, but it's.
Covers up, yeah.
Yeah, typically you keep it about a foot, uh, from the edge of the sidewalk, a lot of foot from the property line.
And then what about sidewalks in the south?
There, there is, there's a small section, I think, on the south, but for the most part, there's no sidewalk.
For basically, if you can see it.
Yeah, I see it, you have to knock the fence down, I assume, do you even put one to the south there or move it back?
That's playground though, do you wanna?
It's asking, sidewalks to both sides. Right now, I mean, it's, it's up, it's up to council, I mean, how you wanna deal with it. You know, at the very least, I would recommend grating back, you know, the grassy area between the, the road and the, and the right-of-ways that you could put a sidewalk in in the future. Uh, if you, if you didn't do a parts project.
Well, and the other thing I'm noticing here is that, the, that chain link fence is quite a ways outside the property line. You know, and it, we could say, we're gonna put a sidewalk through here and school, sorry to say it, you're gonna have to move that fence back four feet. I'm not necessarily sure it, there needs to be a fence there, they could just take it down too, for that matter, but. We've been getting a lot of, lot of talk this winter about sidewalks and kids walking to school and, you know, whether the sidewalks are scooped or not. And, I mean, on the flip side, twenty-eight foot wide street is gonna help that entire area out a lot, just because of the age of the houses. There isn't hardly, with the exception of a couple that were added onto later, there isn't hardly a, uh, more than a single car garage anywhere on that street. That's what puts all the cars on it, that's why there's almost always half a dozen cars on that street, and that's not gonna change. Twenty-eight foot wide street makes it a whole lot easier to navigate, and if someone is walking on the street, there's a little bit more room for them to go. So, that's still, you're still juggling the sidewalk to street thought process, you know?
I'm still on the dense side, I need your help.
Yeah.
How much, how far do we go in the twenty-eight foot street? How much distance is it gonna be from the back of the curb to the sidewalk?
I, I can't, I can't really tell you right now, yeah, I, it, we don't want, once we get the survey out, I don't even know what it is right now, to tell you through.
Well, twenty thousand dollars is, in a project like this, is practically many cases.
Less than five percent.
So you're, don't we have a fifty-foot right-of-way?
It's fifty foot, yeah.
Okay, so if you got a twenty-eight foot street, and then that, so you take your fifty, divide that leaves how many feet on each side?
Twenty-two feet on each side.
Yeah, so then you can put your sidewalks.
About six feet.
You know, accordingly, on one, on the one side, that doesn't have hardly anything. Now, the other side, we might have some tree issues and we might have some other things going on.
Well, like Matt said, though, that street is not dead center in that right-of-way either. You could go, you know, you could lay it any amount, maybe it's a, it's a foot and a half additional on that north side that's already.
Mean offset there.
And then two and a half feet, or, you know, or three and a half feet on the other side to make, you know, or whatever it is.
I think that'd be something to make, to see like on what we'd have, hold on, hold on, see how much we have each side.
Yeah, there's definitely, there's definitely more room on the south side right now.
Right. Okay, Chester, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Would we be prudent, Matt, to survey this first before we made these decisions?
Yeah, so what, what would we do? Um, do we survey everything? Um, then we'd put together a preliminary, um, design, but it's mainly an outline. And then we'd also provide you with a cross-section of the, what the right-of-way would look like, showing you where the right-of-way is and where the sidewalk could be.
I think, I think we almost need that to go to make a, a sound decision.
Yeah, and, and it, it, it doesn't really impact the design as, as far as, it just, word a lot, I mean.
Yeah.
It doesn't, it didn't take any more effort for me to make a twenty-four versus twenty-eight, it's just, it only impacts really what the construction budget I'm coming at, so.
But it would help me, I make it, help me to make this.
Yeah, we wouldn't, yep.
I think if I knew exactly where things were gonna be.
Yeah, so what we'd do is to get this survey done and then have a preliminary, uh, docket, so you can see, you know, how, how a twenty-eight would lay in there. And if you don't like it, then we could go to twenty-six or whatever else.
Do you have any questions?
I, I would like to see what the impact would be with sidewalks also on the south side.
I.
I think they're aesthetically more pleasing and what happens is, on the north side there, when you're gonna lose the, um, amount of parking or it's gonna be limited, although they're not supposed to, they park in such a manner, especially on busy times or holidays or whatever, where they'll, um, block the sidewalk. And then, so then you can't walk freely or ride a bike freely or whatever it is across that north side. However, uh, so I would like to see that south side sidewalk on there, but I mean, if there's no interest, it's not the desire of the council, obviously, it's the time for one person to want it, nobody else. On the south side, though, to do that, I'd also like to know what the entire impact's gonna be against the school, if it's gonna be cost prohibitive to do the school, especially in a bad financial year for all educational, uh, you know, facilities, then it's not gonna be feasible.
Just removing the fence, it would be not a deal. But Steve, do you have anything you need to ask? Anything you wanna ask? Okay, we're here about, uh, a recon, uh, reconstruction contract, is that correct? You're wanting this to take care of?
Yeah, I know, if you guys are ready, but I, um, I do have a, a, a contract for design, um, design of basically going from Main Street all the way over to, to Nailers, where Nailers basically, just west of Third. So we go from, you know, west to the, uh, to Main to the, where the pavement, new pavement, red leveling, new pavement, uh, ends.
Is that even taking that little short chunk?
Yeah, there's like a, there's like a two-hundred foot.
Yeah, is that short chunk?
Yeah.
Pass, okay, I'm just making, cause there was a dead end that went back there before and now it's through.
That was, okay.
Okay.
Um, it doesn't, it doesn't, we're not gonna do anything with the intersection on Main Street. Um, it really doesn't make any sense to do at this time, if, if you're doing Main Street itself, that's when we would.
Yeah.
Intersection, just tie on to the, you know, we might, we'd probably, um, we'd look at the radiuses and, 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 you know, certain intakes, but other than that, we wouldn't go into Main Street at all. Uh, includes the water main, uh, uh, throughout. Uh, I believe Third already has a new water main on it, so we'd tie in that Third. I'll have to check to see between Nailers and Third, I don't know if that, that's new, I thought it was new too, so. So, most likely it's just being water main from, uh, Third to, uh, to Main, uh, with hydrants and valves. Sanitary sewer should be fine, um, uh, that can be lined, or.
It is lined.
It is lined, it is lined. Um, so whether, we may love with the manhole covers, but we may, we need to adjust those up or down or whatever, or just put new manhole covers in.
If you're gonna pour a street, for what the cost of new manhole cover, so it doesn't leak and.
Yeah.
I think that would be the way to think about it.
The structure itself below would be staying, stay the same, uh, we'd say keep that, but just replace the.
Make sure it's sealed.
Right. Uh, it includes the design, the storm sewer, uh, we'll do the counts on, um, inlet sizing and location, make sure it's picking everything up, um, as it should. There is existing storm sewer there, um, we would just, uh, most likely just replace it with the street.
And this is just a contract for your engineering, correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay. How about the curbs and rolling curbs or whatever, we talked about that when we were engineering.
That would be however, yep, you do, um, trying to think what Nailers has right now, but is that a roll, a roll curve?
Six inch.
Six inch, okay.
Yeah.
Um, that'd be up to council, how you, those type of things, but, um, doesn't really impact much, us again, but however, um, you prefer, um, it doesn't include any easement work or assessment work, and I don't think you're looking at any assessment work anyway. Easements, the only potential easement would be maybe if one of the, is that little section on, tied to Nailers Street to the west, there's a little, if, if we're gonna do a sidewalk there, I don't know if you can see the.
Down in here?
To, to tie to Nailers, to Nailers sidewalk there, we'd have to go through that property there with the sidewalk.
Yeah, the sidewalk ends here and the property line is clear down here.
Yeah, cause the, uh, Nailers, I think the sixty-six foot, uh, right-of-way, sort of sixty-six foot fifty, there's a little, there, there may be, if we go sidewalks, may have a little small easement there. Yeah, just that, oh, shit.
Yeah, so you're mainly wanting this to maybe sign a contract with you today?
If, it's either the better, cause, you know, I know, I know.
I know that's what you're asking, I'm, so I'm wanting to ask the council, is there anybody here that would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, then we sign a contract to take the preliminaries, why is that what you want?
The reconstruction contract.
It'd be the whole thing, I guess, but we, I wouldn't, we would stage it out, you know, we would do the survey and then we'd bring it back and.
So you want a reconstruction contract?
About a professional service to be.
There you go.
The, the one thing I, I wanna interject a little bit, one thing we have to be concerned about, Matt and I talked about it, is most stuff that's getting bid for this summer is out, it's, it's bid. And so, if we want this done, which I think is pretty imperative, because we can't afford to be fixing giant holes if they erupt any further and then just to tear them back out a year later, we need to get him working as quick as we can, if we're gonna do it. So, just wanted everyone to know that, that we are pushing.
That's why we need to get this.
Yeah.
Pretty quick turnaround to get it done, uh, by, what we'll do is, once we get closer to being complete, we'll talk to contractors and see what their workloads are and if it's, um, we can always bid it and if it comes in, we're not getting good interest, then you can always pull it off next year or, or get the contractor more time to.
So we have a motion here for the recon?
I'm trying to.
I know, you already said by the recon.
Professional services.
Professional services. We have a first, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second. All those who favor, say aye.
I'll roll call on that one.
Do we have to roll call it? Okay, let's do it. Go ahead, you go ahead, Chester.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed.
If we have to have a special meeting to get this proceeding on, in my opinion, we're not doing it.
Let's don't back off of it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to our surveyors and, yeah, depending on weather, I guess, we'll get an idea.
I think what the council's mainly looking, this is my opinion, we look, it's, you know, you can sit here and you can talk about it, but actually going out and visually seeing it or having pictures to show us, you know, all right, this is where this is gonna be and the sidewalk's gonna be here. And I, and I'm agreeing that I think we definitely need to put a sidewalk on the south side too, but I mean, those are some things I think that have been pointed out.
Yeah.
Now, any other, any other questions or, I mean, it would be a lot better if we could actually kinda visually see it like that photograph, but actually get a better idea of what we're looking at.
We'll get all the property lines and, and the existing pavement utilities drawn in, and then we'll, we'll, we'll bring back the aerials with cross-sections to show you, you know, twenty, what a twenty-eight foot street would look like, what a twenty-four or twenty-six.
And we could always walk up there with that, take a look.
But the sooner, I think, the better, is I think is what we're, as a council thinking.
We've got so much money to work with.
I mean, we need to get her done.
Project's funded.
It's funded, so let's. Any other questions with Matt or Matt, do you have any more?
No, I don't, I didn't, I'll, like Guy and Owen, we're getting close to getting surveyors out here, we might need your help just kinda marking up the waters, whatever utilities you do know, but.
Yep.
Yeah.
The pro tip, Doug?
I would, so I just maybe.
Have you signed other stuff?
Yeah, I just crossed out.
I just, I just had.
Cause I was gonna say, I only did the water project. I had to go kid you in the field one day to sign something.
Yeah, no kidding. I need a pen that works, please, thank you.
Are we just scrolling up there without a, an actual like you're writing the whole time?
Use blood, Dave, just prick your fingers.
Hey, let's take a note for me, with a pen that doesn't write.
You can pay it for me. Glad to sign any others. For Sharon. It was writing, I wrote all over this one, I wonder what happened, maybe it was a faulty paper, they've cut back on the paper. Any other questions, gentlemen, of Matt? Guy? Thank you, Matt.
I'll talk to him later till I'm sick of him, so.
Yeah.
By the time we get done all of it.
Yeah, I think, I think the next, as soon as you can get something together, it shows us, even if it's between meetings, uh, I think, the sooner we can get bids let and, make the better off we are.
We won't get into the, into the real hard design till we get input from you guys on, on those, you know, curves and width and sidewalks and all that, so.
I don't, I don't want the, I mean, all three are nice, but I, I, I can, I don't know what the count, rest of the council feels, but I think, I don't think the twenty-four is really something we wanna, I think that we wanna be the twenty-six or twenty-eight, personally.
I would personally go for twenty-eight.
I mean, it would save you time not doing all three of them, is what I guess I'm trying to say.
Well, I, we wouldn't go a full, or it would just be more of a display that, like, we can print out bigger, bigger versions of that essentially, unpostable of that thing, and we can.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, and, anybody wants to speak? Okay. Make a vote, uh, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, if there are any changes with addition of bills.
On additional invoice, you give it your own for cutting edges for the sidewalk.
I still move with the addition?
We have a first on the consent agenda with the addition of one bill. We have a second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I don't know, carry on.
Yeah.
Did you check with the county on blades?
No, no, they don't have any, this is, that was for the deep pile and, they don't have any.
Oh, okay, oh, okay.
And I still have one left.
I know, from the big, big plow, we got them from the county, and they were cheaper than anybody else.
Yeah, no, yeah, this is for the, this is for the pickup deep pile.
All right, you're up.
Cool. All right. Um, water, everything looks good, chlorine is good, I am waiting for. Water, everything looks good, chlorine is good. I am waiting for my new two hundred and fifty dollar cylinder of chlorine divs. To, um, calibrate my chlorine detectors, the one out at well three through an error code, and so I've got it set off for now until I can get it. Get it calibrated. Um, not, not a big deal. Got our annual DNR water usage report filed. The, just wanted to remind you that Iowa Rural Water Conference that you approved that I go to starts on twenty-second, so barring any major weather. I'll be out of town twenty-second, twenty-third and twenty-fourth, um, and I will have John ready, you know, to handle whatever is going on. And then Sharon has, was looking at the agenda and noticed that there was, uh, classes that she would like to attend. Called Iowa Rural Water, they said that there would be no charge if she wasn't there for the whole conference, if she was just sitting in on. Uh, some of these meetings, they have to do with financing these big projects and also on, uh, she wants to keep up on the chlorine since she did it. In between things, so there's a chlorine class and then some financing classes that she wants to go to.
So what's this gonna entail?
Couple nights motels so she can be there to hit all the classes.
Any motions?
I'll make a motion, we'll send her.
I'll second it since I can, I can vote.
Who's supposed to vote?
Well, I know, I just second my.
Well, she's been good enough to do the fire.
Yeah, she needs to, we gotta have two people.
Stay up.
Yeah. Oh, we have a motion to send her a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. You're on, Guy.
Okay, um, just got a letter today from Neptune Ferguson, which is where we get our meters. And our handheld, I don't know if you've all seen the little handheld that I take around and read meters with, um, it's kind of a monstrosity for this day and age, but. Um, works fine, but we just got a letter saying that they've quit making it. Um, it's obsolete, of course. Uh, they were originally gonna try and, and, uh, support it through December seventeenth. But they've already had trouble getting parts for it, and so they're saying that. Um, the end of this year, they will not service it anymore. Um, not saying we couldn't continue to use it, but that being said, in the letter, they have offered, they have an offer to. Upgrade to a newer system to replace it and they'll basically give us some trade-in value. Um, so like I said, just got it today, didn't get to research it much, but what I did look up, basically the unit that they're talking about replacing it with. Is just a multi-function, heavy-duty GPS receiver that has the data logging capability to it. Now, going back to last month's conversation about, um, locators, maybe rather than a locator that has a GPS built into it. We need to think about, as I researched this, uh, you know, taking their offer on the trade, if it's, if it's a good number. I mean, I found this unit on eBay for thirteen hundred bucks. So, I mean, it'll, it'll all depend on what they're offering us for a trade and what they're selling this thing for, but, um. What I'm saying is, if. If that has a GPS capability I was talking about for locating all these water services, maybe that's a better route to go than spending the big bucks on a locator. Cuz locator, you don't just carry around in your hand and, and go, you know, find something. You could use that GPS unit to say, oh, okay, yeah. This is at this coordinate, whatever. All I'm saying is, it may wind up in the long run saving us some bucks. We don't have to buy the. We wouldn't have to buy the expensive locator to have that capability cuz we'd have it in our meter reader device, so.
This new unit will do the same thing as the other, it's just, it's, I mean, as our old meter reader, it's just an upgrade, it's got some additional features.
Yeah, basically, it, it just is, is, you know, the newest version, so I'm sure there's a software upgrade. And then you use this unit to collect the input. Not, not soon at all. Just got the letter today, uh, the, the trade-in thing ends, um, July twenty-ninth.
That's what I was getting at, I know they're just gonna have a limited offer on that.
By the time we get, before we, long before we get to July, I will have done all the research on it to know whether it does what I think it will do. And also what the price will be, so like I said, I just came in today, so. Um, something for on the horizon. On the sewer stuff, um, the lift station pump is back. Um, the invoice was, as they quoted, twenty-eight hundred and six dollars or whatever it was. Um, they, they delivered it to us just like they said they would, um, checked on it to make sure it was here. And also sent me a quote, which he offered and I asked for, for service contract. We have a service contract with Iowa Pump Works. It's not for any certain duration of time, it's ongoing. And we can cancel it with thirty days written notice, which I feel like we should do, we should, because. The service contract from Iowa Pump Works was for six hundred and ninety-four dollars to come and service those two pumps in that wet well. Quality Flow, who, man, is the dealer for the brand of pumps that we have, will do the same service for two hundred dollars. And also, not only will they do it for two hundred dollars, they won't charge us that stupid trip charge that I was telling you all about. Because they will schedule all of their services in this area to be done over a one-week period, and so we don't get hit with the trip charge either. And even the charge to deliver the pump after they built it to our door was only a hundred and fifty dollars, Iowa Pump. And their place where they work on this stuff is up in Minnesota. Iowa Pump was charging us seven hundred dollars or whatever, just to come from Hankin. To do stuff like that, so I guess my recommendation would be. I don't know if you have to, if Mayor has signed it, Mayor Pro Tim has signed it, but let's send Iowa Pump Works a letter, cancel them. Sign an agreement with Quality Flow to do our, our maintenance sometime next summer and then go from there.
Need a motion to, anybody? I wanna go with the other people.
Okay.
Make a motion and we change.
You're gonna cancel one and hire another?
Cancel one and.
Cancel Iowa Pump Works and sign with Quality Flow.
Okay, we have a change contracts with service on the pumps, a second?
I'll second.
We have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're still up?
Sump pump inspections have slowed, um, I've been busy with snow and other things, but, um, ready to get back at it. I'm knocking on doors now and. I've got a dozen that I have told me come anytime, I gotta get to them and then, then I'm gonna start knocking on doors, so if there's bullet holes in me. Next meeting, that's what happened, so.
Don't worry.
I had a company.
Are there holdouts? Are there people that don't wanna be inspected?
Yeah, there's people that don't, yeah, yeah. In fact, I just got a Sunday call last week from a resident who had replaced, um. Clothes washer valve, and when they turned their valve in the basement back on, it was leaking, so they called me on a Sunday to come and shut their water off at the curb stop. So they could fix the, the leaking valve, which I gladly did, and when I asked, hey, we haven't done your sump pump inspection yet, they gave me every excuse under the sun. Why I, they couldn't do it, and then I talked to the guy that wound up coming and fixing their valve, he, he tracked me down and said, okay, I'm done with the key now. Uh, you know, you can come get it, and, uh, he says, yeah, they barely let me in the basement, they don't want you in the basement, it's a mess down there and they're embarrassed. And they, they'll do anything to keep you out of there, so, uh, that's part of it, stuff like that, so.
Is there some violation to the sump pump that, I mean, what they?
Well, no, in fact, that guy told me that their particular sump pump is hooked up correct, and the thing is, I just can't take everyone's word for it or. Or, you know, I'll have ten of them get away with it.
I just wonder why, if it wouldn't, hey, take a look?
Oh, I've been, I've been in some train wrecks of basements now already, so.
Um, I know there's some people, and this just, I don't wanna hold things up, I just have a question. There's like a reverse water way, you know, where you can use the water pressure, you know.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
With your power goes out, do you allow for those?
Yeah, yeah.
So I mean, there's not something that they're doing that's.
No, no. The only ones that I've really found wrong are ones that are straight up plumbed into the sewer.
Sewer.
Or the hose runs straight to the floor drain.
Yeah.
And the only, I've had two now that had bypasses built in, which are illegal. For the most part, they're doing it right, they're pumping it outside, but they have it valves. So that if their outlet freezes up, they can turn the valve and run it into sanitary. Well, that's not legal either, cuz how are we supposed to know when? You know, did they have to valve it into the sanitary and then they forgot to put it back outside? You know what I mean? Anyway, so, um, I'm still collecting information on our manhole repair. I think we got a, an overall problem with manholes. I think somebody raised chimneys at some point and blocked them up with wood. And now, I've noticed in the last two weeks that there's, I bet nine or ten manhole covers that are about. An inch and a half below surface, and I noticed it when I had the one in Visu Sewer was up here. We were looking in one of the manholes that's leaking the worst, and he's like, look at that, that's about fall. Cuz they just had wood blocks and it wasn't even treated wood, holding up the chimney, the metal ring that has the lid on it. And so I think that's what's happening all over the place, is they all got blocked up and now they're starting to sink, so. I had, I'd had two companies look at it, Visu Sewer and, um, Save Our Sewers out of Cedar Rapids. I have not gotten numbers back from Save Our Sewers. I do have from Visu Sewer, and I have a company from Cherokee, Iowa coming. Um, they cover the whole state, so they're gonna come look at them soon and we'll compile some numbers and try and get some leaks stopped. And, and maybe see what we need to do about, you know, if we can, you know, how, how serious of a deal it's gonna be to lift those chimneys back up. And get them where they need to be, if it's gonna be, you know, cuz there's a couple of them sunk and they don't even have the traditional diamond cut-out concrete around them. They're just in the street, so then you're gonna have to cut the diamond out and then fix them and then put them back in, so. There, and by the same token, are we taking a lot of water in from that scenario too? I don't know. This is gonna be an ongoing project through the spring as it thaws out, we see where the water's coming in and then, you know.
So these bids, are these per manhole?
Yeah, it's kinda.
Uh, it's just a rough estimate, because until you get into them, some you might be taking a lot out, some you might not be taking hardly.
I just, I basically, I wanna know how much is it gonna cost, you know, I've got two pretty good scenarios. I got the one up on the north end of Maine. That leaks through every joint in the curving and squirts all the way across the hole when it's really wet. And then I've got the one down at the south end that has a huge amount of water that comes in beside the, the inlet pipe. But it's not coming in, out of the pipe, it's coming in beside it, so I kinda got two different scenarios. I've got numbers on both types of scenarios. So I should be able, as I inspect manholes, be able to make an educated guess as to how much it's gonna cost.
Can you have one on the north and you had trouble getting in or did you get in that one?
No, we got in, I got in the one, yeah, yep, so.
So Guy, with, in my experience of this, you're not just gonna raise that, you've gotta cut it out.
Gonna have to take it out, yeah, yeah.
And you want it done right, so we don't have the infiltration and don't have the problem.
I'd like to think when you, if you got one that just fell, you could jack it back up, but I bet it probably is impossible, nearly.
You'll take that casting out.
Yeah, so there then.
They make the ones that. That have the seal that actually, you got the, the metal cover and then there's another.
Chimney seal.
Chimney seal.
It's rubber, they're junk.
They are junk, okay.
My personal experience.
We have a few of those in town and where we have, you know, we do have a few streets that run some pretty heavy water down them and run over top of them. I think that's why they put those in that street.
Well, I've never seen one in this town that is actually gets covered up by water. I'm not saying it isn't taking a little as it's raining, but I, you know, I don't think. We generally ever have any that are covered up by water, except for the one down in the ditch.
I've seen one in Howard.
But anyway, maybe it's a case where if we know for those fallen chimneys, it's, it's X number of dollars, we decide we're gonna do three. And then next year, we're gonna do three and, you know, keep going until we got them all fixed or whatever, but we, we need to stop up that water. The ones that are really leaking, the infiltration ones, we need to get them shut off first and foremost and.
Well, the DNR has been patient because we are active, we need to stay active.
Yeah, yeah, all, all we gotta do is stay after it and they'll stay after that, so. Um, on the maintenance items, we had a little, um, line shut the power off the other morning. I got up four-thirty and went and snoozed in my pickup and waited. And all the generators started, um, I was tickled after all the little things we've gone through, getting them back running, all three generators started. That was a true test, you know, when the power went out, they all kicked on and ran, so no problem.
Did you silence the alarms? I never got a phone call that we lost the lift station power.
Yeah, no, I was there, I had, I had my finger on the button.
Okay, cuz I was, I was waiting for the call.
Oh, yeah.
And I, I just, I mean, it's kinda nice to have it working because.
Yep, no, I was there, I had, I had them acknowledged before they, cuz they, they alarmed for like three minutes before they actually made the call, so. No problem. Um, I've got the office completely out at the shop, everything is done. If you can see it, I know it's a long ways off, but it made a huge difference, got lots of room. I can get all three rigs in just like, uh. Like I was expecting and did have, and the natural light coming in those windows is awesome. Because be, when the office was there, there was no natural light in that building whatsoever unless the garage door was open, so. That, uh, feel free to stop by anytime any of you have not been in there, so.
Nice.
It's, it's nice. It turned out really good. The asbestos, they quoted us eight fifty. If they charge us eight fifty, I'm gonna drive over there and wring that guy's net. Those guys did not even suit up. They did not do anything, they just carefully took the asbestos down, put it on plastic, wrapped it up and took it to landfill. Didn't even put a dust mask on. They were there two and a half hours. That's it. So if we get a bill for eight fifty, we'll be.
They followed the rig, their safety.
Exactly, so.
Did, uh, did the DNR inspect that located?
That, they filled out the paperwork, they, I, we hired them and they are an abatement company. They filled out paperwork, sent it to the state. And no one was there to do any inspections. I, I think it's their burden because they filled out the paperwork, and I have a copy of it.
After ten days, it's, they inspected it.
Yeah, nobody came in that ten-day period, so, and I realize it was minimal asbestos, but, you know.
Better safe than sorry.
Yeah, exactly. Um, oh, and I, I've been trying to, if at all possible, I'm fueling the fuel trucks up at the shop. There's no reason for us to be paying. Road tax on fuel in those fuel, in those fire trucks, so I've, I've filled them all up twice now and that way I can kinda monitor the fuel. Too, as far as cold weather conditions, so.
How are we on our fuel barrel?
I just put two hundred gallons in it.
I was gonna say, cuz it's down quite a ways right now.
Yep.
I have one twenty-nine.
Yeah, it's, it was not more than what, a week ago, I ordered, it was right before the poss, the, we were supposed to have the blazer.
Thirty-one forty.
Yeah, I had them, I had them fill it, put two hundred gallons in it, so I knew I'd have enough and so, yep. Um, on the parks, I am starting on the Green Communities Grant from, um, Rockwell. Um, they have money available, I think I told you last, uh, month, if, you know, you're doing anything to help the environment, help your. You know, creating things up in your community, whatever, so I'm starting on that. I asked Brian to see if he could find an old picture, gather a picture of all those kids. That live over there on Longworth and Willow that all wind up playing in the street, for lack of anyplace else to do it. That, this is the suggestion from Dave Philip from Rockwell, who gave me the grant application. You know, take a picture of that green space that we got in its rough condition that it is now, take a picture of those kids playing in the middle of the street. Contrast, you know, this is what we got now, and then my youngest daughter is a genius on the computer as far as she's. Telling me she's gonna be an architect anyway, she's got a computer program, she says she can kinda take that area and basically. Make it a green area with some shrubbery and all that stuff, so hopefully she's gonna get that together for me and I'll submit the grant. Maybe we can get some money from Rockwell to, you know, at the very least, get that thing leveled off and, and seated down. So those kids got a place to play until we do more with it.
Hey Guy, I have video, we were sledding on the dirt pile, and I've got video of that.
Cool.
I took our GoPro out, so.
That'd be cool.
I can still frame any of that if you want pictures, there's like a dozen kids out there with us, so.
Sweet, beautiful.
I'll get you some of those.
What are your kids doing Saturday? They wanna run out in the street with my kids?
Right.
One, as soon as, as soon as they run out in the street, then about thirteen more are gonna come out.
Well, whistle, round them up.
Down real fast with a truck or something like that while they're playing, that way you can show them diving out.
V-plow.
Anyway, okay, on to the next. Uh, I have the guy from Poly Rays here, uh, looking at some of those concrete panels on Roosevelt. And then the two spots on Donald that we chose not to replace concrete. Um, it, that have just enough of a dip they hold water, and his numbers that he gave me on two scenarios are. Excuse me a minute, I gotta get back to that part. The five-by-twenty section on Roosevelt, which is one of the bigger slabs, to lift it would be eleven hundred and sixty dollars. And it's down almost two inches, uh, on the, in, you know, on the, away from the curb, five foot away from the curb, twenty foot long. Away from the curb, five foot away from the curb, twenty foot long, it's down almost two inches. Said he can lift that for eleven hundred and sixty dollars. And then the, the, over on Donald Drive, one of those areas that's kinda falling together. To lift both of those panels, which are much bigger panels, would be twenty-seven hundred and sixty dollars, so. What I told him was, give me the scenarios as far as, you know, this type of repair and this type of repair. Then, kinda like the manholes, we can decide if we wanna try it, how far we wanna go with it. You know, I, I wouldn't suggest trying to lift everything that's maybe sunk, but try and fix a couple areas. See how it looks a year from now, whatever, um. We don't have to make a decision today though, because he wants the ground completely thought out before he's putting that stuff in there, so. Uh, I'll keep that on my report for as we get to warmer weather. But, um, I don't know, should I be looking at a concrete replacement estimate for some of those? Like on Roosevelt to compare to the, to the poly lifting? I mean, there's absolutely nothing wrong with those concrete slabs if they just were back up to the surfaces, the concrete beside them. Is, is the whole reason I got the guy to come and look at it, so.
The only thing is something's caused that to, either, is it gonna keep settling even after he puts that stuff in there, is it gonna settle again?
Well, the same problem exists like when we started in the Donald.
Exactly.
Though, if we pull the concrete out and try and replace it, are we gonna wind up digging a foot of fill out? The nice part about the, the polyurethane is it fills every crevice, it goes everywhere, I mean, if there is a gap, it fills it. And, you know, despite the fact that it fell originally, in theory, it should hold up at this point. It's already done it settling. And so if you fill it up with the polyurethane, I asked him about truck traffic, he said absolutely no problem, put all the weight you want on it. Um, you know, he's drilling a dime sized hole and injecting this stuff in, so there's no. You're not hurting the integrity of the concrete, anything like that, I mean, I'd, I'd like to try it in a couple areas. If it's a bomb, we're not out a terrible amount of money. Um, if it holds up though, there's, I bet there's twenty places around town where we maybe could extend the life of that street. By another five, ten years, cuz we don't have this giant piece that's broke out that we gotta go after, you know. Cuz we stopped that jarring and the snowplow damage and the, you know, you know what I'm saying, but. Um, just wanted to throw those numbers out there for you. Um. Pick up a pile of pothole patch at Pelling today, so guess what, next kinda half ass warm weather fun job will be. Anybody who wants to donate some time, just come on over.
Bad right there by the fire station.
I know.
Going north is starting a couple of them.
I wonder if that intersection with Roosevelt and, and Maine, if we don't need to think about doing a, a concrete. Chunk, you know, pouring a, a slab right there, that gets all those trucks turning on it and, and cars and everything else and.
How many do you patch them with the?
Oh, I pothole patch all year round, I mean, as far as the little holes go, it's just, it's a constant. What's that?
Are you buying the good stuff?
I'm buying the better than, than Menard stuff.
The, the state stuff, stuff that's got a lot of oil in it.
Yeah, this stuff felt pretty spongy.
Expensive, it's like a hundred and twenty-eight a ton.
Uh, this stuff was six hundred and sixteen dollars for fifty-six bags.
Oh, you're buying bags.
Bags, yeah, cuz I can't handle the bulk, I don't, I don't have any weight to, you know, and then.
Yeah, I know what you're buying.
The stuff in the bags is supposed to, to be a hundred percent all weather and whatever. I mean, it's, there, if you look around at this asphalt parts of the street, you'll see lots and lots and lots of patches, it does stay in place, it does work, but.
We have, like, a lot at work, I think they only do that once a year or so, I don't know what they put down, but it stays pretty good, and we have cars going down twenty-four seven on the lot. So they put something down that works pretty good.
Yeah. There's a lot, you know, there again, we're, we're tying into a big project with Moot Hard, but I would love to have a number on milling off. You know, Main Street and putting three inches of asphalt on it, you know, there's enough damage out there, I'd like to know what that number is. And see if it's feasible anywhere in the relatively short term, I know Moot Hard is gonna, gonna, four inches. Three is not a, gotcha, anyway, whatever that number is, I don't know, but.
And then the prep work, before, after you mill.
I mean, Pelling can come do it today.
Yeah, sure.
They could mill, you know, have the first.
Yeah.
Basin first and, I guess it'll take two days, but.
I'm, I'm just saying, is that a two hundred and fifty thousand, thousand dollar project, or is that a five hundred thousand dollar project, you know, I don't know that.
About two fifty, be in the ballpark, but it's still a chunk of change.
Exactly, exactly, and maybe that's something for two years from now, so meantime, I'll keep patching, I'll keep filling the holes and. Maybe if we need to do some concrete at the end of Roosevelt where it meets Main Street, we'll do a little bit, cuz. You know, you spend five thousand dollars on, on some concrete right there on that heavily used intersection, that's not wasted. You know, there's, that would, that would do us some good, but it's.
And you can, and you can grind and, and bring asphalt up to that sections, I mean, the county's done them on the, on the Albert Net Road.
Yeah.
Where that transitioned, uh, corners are.
Just the holes have erupted here in the last three weeks or so, and it's like.
It's been an interesting one.
I put that entire pallet worth in the shop, I hand, hand unload it and stacked it against the walls so I could. Keep it warm, so it's good and flowable, whenever I'm ready to use it, I can just pop it in some holes, so. Um. Next thing, oh, uh, project between now and next meeting is start working on getting estimates for seeding or sodding. Donald and Lori, uh, what we have to do in the spring, so. I'll, uh, be getting on that, if anybody has any suggestions of people to call or how you wanna go about it. Um, is that some, I put it on paper on, advertise on Craigslist for to get people? Or do you wanna be selective about who you ask to do that job?
There's a place in Marion on, um, Munier Road and First Avenue, but I cannot think of what they're called, I can see their truck, they have a. Hang on, there out you wanna go, they have a, um, oh my gosh, can't think of it now, it's raised. I don't know if that's right, you wanna go?
I wanted to.
They're an option.
Yeah, and Kevin, shoot, he had a company in Walker when he got done with his, uh, Water Main Project, come hydro seed too, so yeah, that's another one. I'll, he's got, that company's from up north, but he said they'd come down here, no problem, so I'll get a couple quotes on hydro seeding too.
There's a company in, that works, I think, too.
Okay, I'll, I'll start digging in, I, I plan on hopefully having, you know. Some of these companies, they probably love to know what their first job is in the spring at, right about now, so maybe I can even have something ready for you to make a decision on by next meeting, so. Um. Other than that, uh, picked up another thirty-one hundred and some pound tote of, uh, calcium chloride salt mix over at. Snowville and Hopkinton the other day, we, uh, it took us a year to use up the last one, so. Um.
Only twenty-four hundred pounds.
Yeah, that one was, that one was smaller, um, I talked to the guy over there and he called two or three of his real regular customers. And I'm definitely not mixing it against that cuz those guys are, there's one, the guy there in Hopkinton, because he's got no expense of going to get it. Way overdoes it, but the other two guys that he talked to. Um, you know, they're mixing one bag to two dump truck loads of sand basically, is their, is their blend ratio with that stuff. I'm probably spreading that bag out over four dump truck loads of sand, uh, us guessing. Um, but I, I don't know, tell me what you think of the streets, should I be going, I mean, I think I will blend it a little thicker, but. Um.
Are you putting this a powder, right?
No, it's, it's actual rock solid mix with calcium chloride, it's, it's granular, so. And it's.
We used to use that.
Yeah.
Sometimes we pre-treat it with salt brine.
Yeah.
So once it hits the street, it's wet already.
Yeah.
We don't have salt brine, do we, or ability to spray it or pre-treat it.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, I, I like the way it works, I don't have any issue, I mean, that's, uh, that, there again, that was four hundred bucks and it lasted a year. Now, we haven't had a ton of need, but even if I go a little heavier, let's say I go through two bags in winter, you're still only talking eight hundred dollars worth of. Of pre-treating product, so, plus the sand, of course.
Too, and you can adjust a little of that by.
How big I spray it.
Throw it on, and I think it comes down to how bad, how bad it is, I mean, if you got. You got a lot of ice or it's really thick.
Yeah.
I think you know it's gonna take more of that solution.
Yeah, yeah, do you know Brian what rock, rock salt ice is, and he probably don't know.
I can find out.
I'm curious because.
Marion buys it straight from.
Oh, I know, I know, I totally understand, I'm just saying.
We get it a lot cheaper.
Yeah.
But we also, Marion also sells to small communities, they sell Bertram Spring well.
Yeah.
I watch them.
But if you don't have calcium chloride in it, that stuff stops working at five, I don't care what, five degrees, I don't care what you do to it. You know, where this stuff, it definitely still keeps on going below zero, so.
I think salt brine's a joke personally, but.
I do too, but I mean, I think.
Salt brine has a window also, I can't tell you the numbers, but.
I think it's colder though than just the plain. What I've noticed is that you can see where it's activated.
Mm-hmm.
And when you put it on, you can tell that it's working.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah, I've been, I, I've, I've been thinking all along, I need to go a little heavier and, and, um, I, I will. There's no reason to have trouble, but, uh, it's still, I, I think our salt and sand cost is quite reasonable. Um, unless we find a better option, I, I think I'll stick with that program, so.
Anything else there?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, thank you Guy.
You're welcome.
Uh, set a public hearing for budget amendment, what's up?
Next meeting. We did the amendment on the budget and we added the twelve thousand and to help with the library expense. Seven thousand was for the attorney for the tip district. And then we added, um, thirty-two thousand down on the.
Right, okay.
Propriet, or well, it's on water, or water because we.
We have time to set this for next meeting then?
Yeah, that's all you need to do is set it for the next meeting, that's what the budget amendment was, it'll be published in the paper.
Would, would that date be, please, I don't have my calendar with me.
March.
Okay.
Tenth.
Pardon me, Kent?
Tenth.
Thank you.
So do we have a motion to set it?
I move we set the public hearing for budget amendment, amendment, amendment for next meeting, March tenth.
Okay, we have a first, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All we have set a public hearing for.
The budget.
The budget, so, can we do that next meeting? That would be March tenth, if anybody needs a date. You're sharp tonight. Hey, I'll make a motion that we set our budget March tenth.
I'll second that as well.
On March tenth?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Class, lefties, Class E liquor license. Uh, from what I understand, they have a new company now that's kinda managing them. And, um, they're wanting to have a Class E liquor license.
I did have a question about this. Find it in the packet.
Here, hand me mine, here, hand me mine.
Um, effective date, three months, twenty sixteen expiration, one one nineteen hundred.
I saw that on there.
Is that normal?
No.
Is it one year or what is, what is the expiration date?
They're a year.
They're a year, okay. So, other than that, clarifying, I don't know, I don't, maybe it doesn't allow it to go or some, I don't know.
Well, they are asking the city and then they will go through the state and apply to the state and everything, but they wanted to make sure the city would approve it before they wasted their time.
Okay.
And money and everything else.
That was the only thing I saw.
Yeah, I know it's due.
Any other discussion from the council before we ask for a motion here? Then we'll entertain a motion. Through this.
I saw move.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the Class E liquor license or approve a Class E liquor license for our convenience store.
I'll second it.
Chester seconds it, first and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have to approve the contract, what is the?
Went up a dollar.
Went up a dollar per hour?
It's up to thirty-three dollars per hour for forty-three hours of what we contract.
Yeah, I think they didn't wait four hours than what we ever paid for, and it's kinda nice to have them there.
Is this a year of contracts, every year?
Yeah. Would have any type of, uh, motion?
They're thirty-three an hour, stayed the same? Is it a dollar more?
What a dollar. Dollar an hour.
Yeah, it was thirty-two, but.
That was thirty-two, thirty-three, okay, that was a dollar, which is more than fair, extra work at Cedar Rapids believes is forty-three bucks an hour and the same thing.
Yeah, I know, yeah. And plus.
It's a gift.
And plus, if you look at how many hours they put in here and we get charged, I mean, they're always over ten to twenty hours. And we only get charged for the forty-three, so.
Yeah, more than fair.
Yeah, if you take the, what they actually put in and divide it out, it's a lot cheaper than that. I'll make a motion to accept the contract or with a law enforcement agency. Now I need a second.
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I forget I can do that. Mission. We have, um. That issue that was caused by our sewer. And he's presented us a bill and would like to know what the council feels is, uh, maybe some appropriate re, uh. reimbursing, uh, because of it. I, uh, my opinion, and this is my opinion and you, everybody else can. Um, if we'd have done this project, we'd have had to replace it anyway. Um, by him doing it, I mean, it just got done, so. I mean, during this project that we just did, we had to replace it also, so we'd have been out that. So. What's it?
We did replace it.
Yeah, I know we did.
It's been done twice.
I know we did.
My opinion on the matter is. Our storms were caused, caused this. I know that, two years later, Alan, that we replaced this, that we, we just did this, did you do this two years ago?
Two and a half, it's summer roof.
May of thirteen.
Yeah.
Two and a half years later, we fixed the problem. This was handled through a different employee at the time, I don't think it was handled properly. I think we owe him something.
As my feeling was.
I don't know what, though.
Seeking the full amount?
Minus that panel up by your house.
Yeah, there's one, one panel sidewalk that didn't have anything to do with the sewer lines. But I wanted to replace cuz it's cracked and, boy.
Which was, I actually, our kids go to daycare right next door, so I actually saw this project. That's very minimal amount of concrete, three, four wheel barrels.
Um, I'm just throwing a number out there, just. I'm just worried about other people coming, I mean, I don't know how many driveways have been replaced, is there any other ones that, if we do this? How far back?
I know for sure, at one point before I even did mine, Kevin Johnson pump jacked it up. But that, that was probably. Eight years ago or whatever, I mean, it's been.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, we're gonna have somebody else come in.
I think we're talking, maybe a different scenario with. Because of the incident with the storm sewer that I don't think there's gonna be a whole lot since all of them have been replaced. And there's only probably been very few other people that have gone to the extremes that you have, Guy.
I have a suggestion, just to set a precedence if you're worried about that, I mean, if you put a, say. The average driveway has a, what, twenty-five year old life expectancy? Or whatever you think that number is and say, he got two years of service out of his, so prorate the amount. Take a percentage, prorate the amount, that way if somebody who did a driveway eight years ago, comes back and says, well. Mine was sunk too, you'll say, okay, you got eight years worth of use out of it and we're not paying the whole bill. But we'll maybe pay, you know, whatever that percentage is.
That's what I'm thinking, I don't think one hundred percent, I don't think we should do that.
One hundred percent, I don't think we should do that, I mean, that's just my opinion.
Well, I agree, but what I'm thinking too is, he did contact.
The city.
The city. And whether it was followed through correctly, I mean, we're not here to pass judgment, obviously, maybe it should have been brought to the attention and it wasn't.
Would have been nice if it would have been.
If it would have been, it could have been something, we might have addressed this problem with our storm sewer sooner. I think there would be a way of saying, look guys, he did bring it to the city's attention and we did not, or to one of it and it did not get passed on, I think. That negates a lot of what you're saying about setting a precedent, if Kevin Johnson didn't approach anybody or Joe. Joe, somebody else didn't do anything else or come forward and actually talk to the city about it. I mean, he went and talked to, and that's as far as it went, well. That's probably not the right procedure, but, uh, I think that would negate, would, would. Make the city not as liable to, or have other people having recourse, because they did not try to bring it to the attention of the city. That's my opinion, anybody else?
I guess I'm gonna throw a number out here and I'm not saying that's the right number. But I think it's a place to start. What do you think about five hundred dollars? So, I don't know, I'm not. I'm just throwing that out. I'm not saying it's the right amount.
Okay, so going back to Guy talking about twenty-five year life expectancy. If you figure Alan got two years out of his driveway. And missed out on twenty-three, those twenty-three years is nine hundred ninety-one dollars and seven cents. I'm not saying that's, I'm just saying the twenty-three years, that's what that equals to.
Steve, is that a good number to, to expect out of a driveway? I mean, is that a number that, you know?
No, I think twenty years.
Twenty, so.
Over twenty.
If you run it at twenty and give him two years off of it, it comes up to nine hundred and seventy bucks. At a twenty year lifespan, two years removed.
Give him that fifty-three dollars a year after. Loss.
Okay.
Depends on what.
So, if we took. You're saying of this bill, that's nine hundred, what'd you say?
You, you, you're, if you're taking two years off of, I mean, if you're taking a twenty year lifespan on a driveway, but if you run it at twenty-five, whatever, I mean, it's a lifespan on a driveway.
Go ahead and go with the twenty, so what are we saying?
The one, the thousand seventy-seven, twenty-six divided by the twenty, puts it at fifty-three, eighty-six per. So, it, at two years off that, you give him nine hundred and seventy bucks.
Okay. And then what would you consider that little chunk that you replaced? Another seventy bucks off for that, or would it be that much? Or is it even worth it? I'm, I'm just asking.
The concrete bill itself was three twenty-five or something.
Oh, so that's not.
Three twenty-eight, thirty-five.
Maybe the wheelbarrowing it up there though was probably expensive, I saw your labor bill. What's the council feel?
I'm fine with, you know, with all these calculations, but I'm just saying we gotta look ahead and be prepared. You know, we can't just shoot a number out there, we gotta have a, something behind it.
We have to have guidelines.
Right.
I agree with you, I think Alan did it right, he went to the city.
And I think that's our only recourse if somebody else comes in, well, why did he get it, well. That's because he did the right procedure and it just didn't fall the right way. Well, we'll entertain a motion here if anybody. I kind of, I'm kind of in agreement.
To make you guys feel any better, as far as I know, everybody else on my street never did anything as far as their. Driveway replacement or anything, so.
What is everybody's feeling on the number? Wouldn't you say nine seventy?
Take off twenty bucks for the panel by its house.
Say nine fifty?
Nine fifty.
What do you think? You're just glad, right?
Almost down with time's day, I'm calling Dana.
Rest of the council before we try and make a motion, any more discussion on this? And what are you thinking?
Yeah, I think I did nine hundred, nine fifty, yes.
That's fine with me.
Okay, then we'll take a motion here.
I'll make a motion that Alan's reimbursed the nine hundred and fifty dollars to the costs incurred with the. Stipulation that these are handled on a case by case basis.
Excellent.
I second that.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I said very good.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, side note, Alan, you should tell the two clowns that did your labor that they owe you some money.
Thanks, Alan.
They did very well, anyway, if you wanna pass that along.
Resolution. We need a motion on a resolution.
I think we're coming, doesn't it?
Transfer employee benefits.
I'll make a motion, is this, okay.
Can you explain it real quick, Sharon?
This is, when we, remember we did our budget, we levy ten thousand dollars for employee benefits, well, it comes in, it goes into employee benefit fund, we now transfer it over to the general fund, which is what I pay the benefits out of. So, at the end of the year, we just transfer the ten thousand over.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we accept. Uh, zero two dash two thousand sixteen dash one to transfer employee benefits, ten thousand dollars, employee benefit to general fund.
We have a first, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second, any discussion? Roll call.
Aye.
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 We went around in order there, if you need it. Motion carries. Resolution, will you explain this one real quick? Please?
This one. End of the year, we usually transfer some. Our general fund and we'll transfer this into the equipment reserve. And that's just kind of a nondescript fund where. Uh, we can use it for.
It's a hidden account.
It's not hidden, it's wide open, it's just, it's not secured by any one shape or form.
It can be used for equipment, which is anything.
And the hundred thousand puts us down to like a hundred and six thousand. In our general fund, which will not have taxes probably this month or next month, but then. April, we'll get taxes back again. So, it just lowers our general fund and puts it somewhere we can.
I see. I would entertain a motion on this resolution.
I'll make a motion, we accept resolution. Zero two dash two zero one six dash two to transfer one hundred thousand from general fund to equipment reserve.
We have a motion, a first, a second?
I will second that motion.
We have a second, any discussion? Roll call vote?
Aye.
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 Went around the tables. Uh, the review of utility rates, um, from what I understand, I think we need to do a little more research, get some research and get some things from Matt, this is something we need to act, isn't that what? I thought this was the thing that we needed to, don't need to do anything really until, or they don't take effect.
Well, prices will take effect, July one, this is whatever you want, it has nothing to do with Matt, it's just that.
But I thought he was gonna come up with some numbers on what it would do, or were you the one that was gonna, I don't know, he's gonna raise.
What it is, is we need to, with our SRF loan, we have to collect a hundred and ten percent, you pay your bills and set aside ten percent reserve, which we have been doing, but. There again, prices are all going up, we're gonna get cut short on our ten percent reserve. So, we should raise our water rates, one percent, two percent, I mean, just small, not like we did last time.
I thought you were gonna actually come up with the numbers and how much that was.
We're not hurting, and we're not doing a loan or anything, it's just that we need to keep our numbers up so that we can set that ten percent aside that is required by our SRF rule.
Okay, what I guess I was meaning was, we were gonna have the numbers that would actually tell us kind of what, if one percent gonna do it, as a one and a half. I mean, that's, that's what, that's what I was.
It would, I mean, we are, we're there, but a year or two from now, we're not gonna be there, and two years from now, you don't wanna do a ten percent increase, let's do a one or two percent.
No. I agree, okay, I didn't know, I thought at the last meeting we said something about having some actual numbers, kind of what it was gonna do, but I misunderstood.
What's our next step then to discuss it or what?
Um, I mean, you want, wanna think about it, um, now our sewer rates, we're only at sixteen dollars per thousand, we're. And this year, we had a lot of sewer expenses, we did do the seven valves up at the lagoon. And if we're gonna start doing some manhole covers and a lot of that stuff, we're gonna have to start getting a little more money into our sewer account, because we've got some big sewer projects, I mean, not big, but.
By the time they add them up.
Build costly.
So, you're talking another like one percent on the sewer?
Two percent.
Two percent?
I'd say two percent, because you're only at sixteen dollars, one percent ain't gonna be too much.
No, I'm just asking.
Two percent?
Yeah. I mean, it's just something to go home and play with some numbers.
So, if we went two percent on both, would we have to do anything next year? I'm talking on the water.
I don't know, your water's high enough, I don't wanna do one percent. Because we are at thirty-eight dollars per thousand and then three seventy-five each thousand after that.
So, you'll be adding one percent onto the minimum and one percent onto the usage.
Okay, all right, yeah, I see what you're saying, I got it, yeah, that makes a difference, I think.
I think that would make enough.
Yeah, because you've got bigger numbers there, we're at sixteen dollars, you have one percent, and then we're two seventy-five, you have one percent, you're not adding very much to the sewer.
No, it's that other one percent on your extended use after minimum that really adds up, that adds up to money for, uh, the extra money.
Yeah.
And one percent really isn't all that much.
Well, yeah, isn't that only gonna raise the average family's bill like a couple bucks a month at, at most, adding those.
And it'd be easier to do a couple bucks each year than.
Oh, I agree.
We don't wanna have to do like we had to do last time.
So, we, do we need to set a meeting then?
Yeah, we went from one to thirty-eight bucks in a year.
Yeah.
Do we need to set up a public hearing for this, or what's our next step on this?
Uh, decide on numbers.
If we do go the one, one percent, do we need to decide tonight and?
No, you don't need to decide tonight.
Okay.
We can decide it next month and then you could have, you know, set your ordinances and then have three readings on your ordinances. And storm water rates are another one we're gonna have to think about, that's only a dollar fifty. Yeah.
That's been, that, that got raised not very long, I mean, that wasn't raised hardly ever, that's what I was gonna say, I think I remember being that all along.
That's never been raised.
So. These we have right here, is this what you're possibly thinking of doing, okay?
Those, those would be what your ordinance would be, just fill it in dollar of honor for you what you want, and I can just put it with you to make the changes on the ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, so we need to make, be ready to go next.
Come back with ideas next.
We need to be ready with the numbers next.
Next, then that means March, April, May, we can do the readings and then July will take effect.
Sounds good.
Let's chew a dollar onto the storm sewer.
A dollar on the storm sewer?
Yeah.
What's the method of notification to the citizens, I mean, how do they?
That's why you have three readings of the ordinance.
Public hearings. I know, but.
That doesn't always get the message out very well.
That's all that's required, that and it's posted in the newsletter, your ordinance gets posted and all that, but. And you're having a public hea- hearing on it, but.
You could put some on the water bills in the preceding months.
I would prefer that, something like that, to at least everybody got a notification that, hey. We're raising these rates, here's what you're currently paying, here's what you're getting, here's why.
I only have two lines on there.
I know, but it, it might be worth sending something out to everybody, I mean, even if.
I think you can just put a notification that we're gonna be raising water rates and that we will have public hearings.
Yeah.
And that way people say, okay.
Because, you know, if you start mailing all the letter, that costs me another couple hundred bucks.
I know, I know, I mean, you could incorporate other stuff in there though, and try to cover a lot of things at once, but, or just something to where it was more than just the reading, I mean, a lot of people don't pay attention to that.
That's what they need.
I know, I agree, I totally agree with that.
That's why you.
They have to take some responsibility too.
I totally agree with that too, but I don't mind paying a little bit higher rate, but I'd like to know what I'm getting, why it needs to be raised and go from there, so.
You just announce that we're gonna raise rates and then we have public hearings and then there. That's all you need to do.
I don't need a babysitter, I'll figure it out on my own.
Well, it'll be in these minutes, it'll be in the next minutes, it'll be.
Okay, let's go on about the city attorney.
Yeah, it'll go on the website.
City attorney search. Definitely need to be doing something soon. It's kinda bad when you, you're worried about even contacting your lawyer, because all he's gonna say, oh, I don't think it's that important. Sharon, will you make this clear so I can read it?
Because this was a power call from one of the meetings.
I went it two years ago.
Do we have a list of any? Attorney that?
Yes. I got this list. June of fourteen.
I know.
They're probably not in practice.
Yeah, cities around the area that are happy with them, is there a way that we can, uh?
Um, a lot of.
I'll let you know if it's any different.
Are using. That Simmons Prime. Adala, that's who Walker's with. Walker uses them, Mount Vernon uses them, Eli uses them, Fairfax uses Simmons Prime.
It sounds to me like they would definitely be experienced.
Yeah.
And know the laws and know the rules.
And the reason we stopped at that last time was that was who Rex had used for his, but see, his wouldn't be a whole toll of leave, we need a municipal.
We're in a municipal size, he used up. That was Rex's attorney?
Well, he used.
Not his engineer, right? Okay. I'm sorry, I had to bring that up. I apologize if I insulted anybody, but. So, what's our next, to get something on board? Any way in our packet we can. Or do we contact them to have them show up, or what's the?
What's the proper step?
What's our proper step next?
Oh, I've never been to an attorney.
Well, maybe that's.
It probably says on here somewhere.
Maybe we need to set that up for next meeting to figure out what our next step is and.
Well, you send out.
I invite me here.
Who's the guy that's Marion's attorney, Hoskins?
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 Hoskins.
Don Hoskins?
Yeah.
And Luma's Don Hoskins.
And what, didn't, what's her name, does she move to another office, does she?
No, she's still there, but she works in.
She's something, something different.
Well, she ran her district.
Oh, okay.
Who's Robbins, you?
Robbins? He was Hoskins. Or they did back in fourteen.
Yeah, that might not be. He's been less than so operative, but.
I think, do you think I know? We're across the street from City Hall.
I've never been to court.
I've sat in court a few times. I've been to Rocker Doctor too, that's a real experience, everybody needs to do that once in their lifetime.
So, we just basically, you know, law firms have them.
Do we need to do this or what?
I think we need to send, get a list and, and send out feelers and see what. I mean, is there a retaining fee or is it just strictly on what you use them? I know, that's, I mean.
Yeah.
Some of them have, want a retaining fee to be your lawyer. Which supposedly that means that they've looked over your city stuff a little bit, and so when you call them, it's not, but whether they do it or not, I mean.
If there wasn't a waste to call the one we've got, we'd probably consult more often than we do.
Should we consult them on how to find a new attorney?
So, what's the council think we better do? Entertain any ideas and make a setup for next meeting?
I think we should have Sharon get a hold of some, find out if they're interested in doing it, and then if they would be willing to come.
Okay.
That sounds like a plan, any, any other discussion you make?
Can I throw a comment in?
Yes, you may.
So, I know at the last meeting, something was said about interviewing.
So, I know at the last meeting, something was said about interviewing and I think Dave, you were the one, I don't know how to interview a lawyer. At work, we have a methodology called behavioral interviewing, where you can ask them questions about situations that they've handled. Might give you an idea for their experience, so, just an idea, you know, when they've had to deal with a difficult situation or something like that, so.
And you could also talk to clerks about how they went about hiring and if, how they went about interviewing. Too, I mean, and, yeah.
You gotta get a feel for their personality more than just what they're gonna charge you.
Exactly.
I mean, you think that there's many smaller cities around here that they're, they share, they're doing multiple cities or something and that they would, would be able to get added on ad hoc, you know?
Yeah.
I have a letter that we'd send out that, this got done in February, well, I wrote this February sixteen, but this is from last year.
Change the date if you send it out.
It's scope of service, it just tells you what kind of service you want, send qualifications and letters of interest to us. We want them to highlight their legal experience with city government, their hourly rate to retain their services, and amount of expertise in municipal legal issues. That's our main thing, we need to make sure they're up to date on legal issues, municipal.
Well, you're, the other cities that they're working for is gonna, those clerks and, and everybody else is gonna say, yeah, God, we've had to use them and they were great, or-
I know Fairfax really likes Simmons prime. I talked to Cynthia, Connie's real happy with Simmons prime and Walker.
Any other discussion here? Any other discussion we can legally do?
Just send out letters, yeah, because I don't think we've ever signed anything like that on our, or contracted in any way.
We could always send him a letter of termination to our new lawyer.
That'd be something our new lawyer could do.
First order of business.
First order of business is you terminate our old lawyers. I mean, I'm not trying to be a smart, well, yes, I am, okay. Delete that, though. Any other comments? Yes, sir. I'm looking for a motion, the last motion of the night. There's no second, we're off. Or there is a second, go ahead, who wants a second?
You can, Dave.
I don't want to.
I will.
Chester wants to go home.